We'll start the meeting at 7:00 to do the pledge.
Pledge of Angels, through the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, AMAM urine?
Yeah.
Ben Hub?
Here.
Jeff Corpenney?
Yeah, I'm just here from right here.
Okay, we don't have any speakers. Correspondents? You got any correspondence, Jeff?
Yeah, a little bit here. I don't know what Jenny's got. I don't want to duplicate stuff. Do you have the resolution from Amy?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't print it out, so it's good. Glad you had it. Wickin County Plan of Commission, they had their meeting yesterday. There wasn't anything on the agenda directly related to Bowling Green. On June 4th, I did attend the Ohio Farm Bureau Policy Development Meeting that Jenny had told us about at the last meeting. I have record requests here. There's three different ones here for Jenny. Mr. Stepp, he said he couldn't be at the meeting, but he wanted me to bring these. This one has seven pieces of information he wants. This one has three, and this one has another three. If possible, I'd like copies of this and also whatever records that you provide him. I think that's it. I think the following correspondence.
I received a signed copy of the trash contract, which we can just talk about that under unfinished business. Another resolution from Amy about the hall rental.
So, excuse me, when you say signed, you mean by the hauler?
It was signed by Big O Rental.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have the hall rental and resolution. Really, that was not it. I did receive $50 check from AEP for the refrigerator.
There's one thing here from the National Trail Fire Department. I'll read it real quick. I have a couple copies. There's only a copy, so if people want to take them, find them, whatever. The National Trail Fire Department, through improvements of equipment, training, and the county water system installation, insurance ratings have been reduced from a 910 to a 6/6X for their coverage area. Check your insurance agent to see if this change applies to your insurance. If you live within five miles of the fire department in Gray Shot, there's a chance that your insurance, homeowner insurance, could go down. I'll say it will, but it could. So, if you live within five miles, definitely contact them. Give them the information that I just stated on there. And I'm sure they will assist. So, there'll be a couple copies out here. I'll just read them if people want to take over. What about the correspondence?
Sure.
Two things tonight says, one, they're both emails. One is from Susan Smith on Mount Pip Road. Says, "We would like to know when weeds along the road are going to be cut." Laurel Hill weeds have been cut for quite some time now. They have holes in the road. And when, and the holes in the road are going to be filled? To answer that, we're actively mowing right now. We've called about cold mix several times. I called today, this is the last time I called. They don't have any right now, the smalls anyways. And they said that if they could get enough people that were arrested, they would make it fast. So, she definitely gave them a phone call.
Cold mixed, they're going to come over.
They do have some. Okay. So, we can look into that, about those problems. There are some out there. Another one's from Misty Bear. It reads, "I contacted Dan on May 28th about zoning. There was no contact made by Ben Hub. Contact Jeff via phone and email. Phone to Jeff concerning zoning. I asked for proof of that information. Dan replied, Ben said he tried to contact those numbers on zoning. I'm sending you a record request with the evidence of contact concerning zoning, Misty or Jeff Bear. There was a phone call that was, I placed to Jeff. There was no answer, so we moved on with the situation, so that will..."
What is the zoning they want?
Sending the record best.
Zoning commission?
That his term had expired. We filled it with the one we were paid to. That's all I had of the correspondence.
Make safety, everything installed up on safety. And zoning.
I gave you a letter, something to add to that letter. Permit 10514. Was done 6/11/14. Blank, gray flat craft, 15765, Main Street in Brownsville. We get an ad on. We have three potential builds coming. One is going to have to have a variance. So, they're, we're working on going towards the Board of Appeals regarding that, which is planning to set it up. And I'm hoping to agree to the appeals board, and that would be the SORC. Bethany Woodrood is a SORC, and Mr. SORC is owns the property. Also, I'll be doing junk cars either the second week of July or August, probably August, but second Tuesday in August. Second Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, second Tuesday in August. That way I have everything sorted and finished. Which would be... The 12.
Zoning, board, and field, unfinished business.
I know there was a question on the contract from before. I asked Amy and John at the same time. John's response was, I remember a vague, the question about the co-mingle bin, the recycle bin. He, John's response was, I remember a vague discussion about it, but are they, what are they looking for? Is there any concern residents will throw traction? We are offering the curbside pickup. Let me know, and we can work something out, I am sure. He sent me the signed contract. He signed two copies of the contract. He sent me that before I asked the question about the bin. And I was thinking, if he's offering curbside recycling for everybody in the township, will we, will they use the bin?
So, you can pick up the hauler and trash or whatever.
Yeah. But Amy's response to my question was, since the recycling site is separate from the single trash hauler contract, I don't think it should be included in the contract extension. However, I think the recycle site should be in a standalone agreement between Big O and the township. Does Big O have a standard agreement that they use for their recycling sites, or do I need to prepare one? If the recycle site is not included in the contract extension, the board should be able to approve the contract extension that I prepared last month. So, she's basically saying the contract extension is okay to sign as is because the recycle bin should be separate.
Now, when do they need that contract back?
I believe it's, it's before, the contract starts August 1st.
What's that?
He said there would be no extra charge for the bin then. Because the gentleman right here said he would do it, no extra charge. And he stood right over there and said he would do it for no extra charge too.
Yeah, and that's one of the...
So, that is bullshit about charging extra.
He didn't say anything about charging extra. He just said he doesn't, he remembers something vague about it. He didn't say...
Well, it wasn't vague. He said.
That's the statement that was here?
Yes.
They offer free curbside pickup. That was one thing, and then also the mall bins and the buildings.
Well, I was asking about you, and he said, he said about the bin. He would set up a bin here. And you said it's going to put it up here and not up in front of the trash.
Do we have another month so you can get that cleared up? Or does there is...
We do, but Amy says the extension can be signed as is. And we have to do a separate thing with Big O for the recycle bin.
I'd rather see in the contract because it was pretty clear I thought that they were going to...
It's up to you guys. I'm just reporting back what Amy says.
She had stated that, that we didn't need, it didn't need to be in the contract, right?
That's what she said. I can reread it if you'd like. "Since the recycle site is separate from the single trash hauler contract, I don't think it should be included in the contract extension. However, I think the recycle site should be in a standalone agreement between Big O and the township. Does Big O have a standard agreement that they use for their recycle sites, or do I need to prepare one?" This was sent to you.
She would need to prepare one. Right, you know, because apparently they didn't supply you with one. It was just verbal when he came in here. Sure. You know, as far as like a recycle site, I don't know. Are they going to pick it up once a week, once a every week, once a month? You know, I don't see them picking it up once a week. They might. I don't know. The best possible way to need to be in the contract talk is going to be, but I don't know where we're going to put it. Think like that, and I would be fine doing a separate contract for that. I'll make motion to get it signed, then. Where is the trash contract? Dan, the discussion to start off with, we would be fine if we did this at the next meeting? Is that right, Jenny?
Yes, but it, it wouldn't matter. Amy says the recycle bin needs to be a separate standalone contract with Big O.
I feel it should be in the contract.
I have a question about the recycling. This is like a three-tier recycle thing?
It's a co-mingle, everything thrown together.
And it won't be on everybody's log. It'll be on township property?
Yes.
Then that contract should not be for the people. It should be for the township owner because it's on township property.
They're offering recycling for the residents.
Right, and that, that part is in the contract.
That, that was in our contract when we first got...
But it was, there was a charge for it the first time.
Right.
Now, they're offering free recycling. Point order, Dan, did you want to open this up to public as some of them are commenting?
It's a question regarding the topic you were on. It's not a public comment. Thank you, Mr. Corpenney.
I'm addressing you, Mr. President. And do you want to, at this time, do you want to allow public comments, hear comments about it?
We recognize public comment. I agree with Jeff that at least, what I see is that this contract is sort of leveraged to get the free stuff. I mean, that's to put it very mildly. What is to say that he reneges on the recycling? I don't think he will. That's not what I'm saying. But if we turn around and give him the bulk of that, then what's to say he's going to follow through? I don't know.
Now, the free residential recycling pickup at the driveway is in the contract.
Oh, okay.
That's already in the contract.
So, I mean, does our deal really hinge on the co-mingle recycling? That's, that's what the question is. The bulk recycling bin centrally located for...
I misunderstood that, but again, I still think it's part of the deal that you made with him. I don't know why I wasn't putting it in there, but...
Well, because the way, what I'm hearing is the bulk is a township thing. The other is a residential.
It sounded like it was all free anyway, so...
Right.
So, it's not, anyway, I misunderstood the original question, but I think it...
You guys made a motion to sign it, or if you want to resend it, it's up to you.
I'm going to go with her opinion. The UFC advised if we could go ahead and sign it, so let's go ahead and sign it.
Okay, let's do roll call.
Other conversations, that, all that aside, I still, I definitely feel like it should be in the contract. The original contract had issues in it. I brought those forward. They were never addressed over the years. And at this point, no matter what you're passing tonight, it's ex post facto. It's after the fact. So, I will be voting no, and that's all the discussion that I have on the matter.
Okay, roll call those. Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
No. Now, before you move on, because of the way you did that, how are you going to follow up with this unfinished portion of it with the promised recycling dumpster?
I will follow up with John and say that we would like a co-mingle bin, and then I will follow up with Amy to have the right of the contract.
I would be a little stronger than that. I would suggest instead of we like, he stated we would have.
I'll take care of it.
Dan, if you don't mind, those went through pretty quick. I just had a quick thing on zoning. I was looking over your updated list, Jenny, and I think you've got some errors here. Under zoning commission, it's not possible for somebody to be on the board and alternate at the same time. I think you've got an error there. You have the decryer expiring 2/28/16, and you have there's an alternate expiring 9/28/15. So, that needs correction. Sorry, we've rest, Dan, but I didn't want to go another month. Thank you. Does that put us on the building reservation sheet? Is that, or is that the trash? Is that the trash?
This is the trash. Did you want to sign it?
I don't want to sign it, but I would like a copy of it. Is it possible you, I want a copy to sign, but can you email the final thing? And also the correspondence that you had regarding the dumpster, I'd like to have that forwarded.
That was sent to you.
Your conversation with Don, was that, did you say Don, John? Was that email?
I guess he didn't respond to everyone.
Well, I can just forward it to you as a point. Thank you. Well, that was just today.
Yes.
One more thing, kind of unfinished business, kind of the deals with the trash contract, is since the last meeting, I had witnessed Big O, I'm sorry, I had witnessed CMI picking up trash in our township still. It was on Monday, I believe it was, the... I believe it was the 9th, June 9th, they were picking up. I took some pictures that are timed and dated, St. Anne, to call Mount Pip Road. I discussed this with Amy. She said we needed to discuss it at the board meeting to see if we wanted to take any action on it. I myself feel that we do need to take some action on it. There's still why, like, a court order that they ordered to stop, so... She said if we decide to do that, to go ahead and vote on it, that we want the prosecutor office to go ahead and take action against... She took the board, the CMR.
I'll make a motion, we take action. We take action.
Let the prosecutor office take action. Contempt charges against CMR now?
Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah. Like you're discussing all the different things too. That was to take action to file contempt charges against CMI? Correct. And you said you had photographs of this? That's correct. They were also emailed to you. You received them, David? Email, what are the pictures on? The trash truck picking up on Mount Pip Road, the address, the mailbox. When was this email supposedly sent? It was all sent to Amy. She replied back to me, but also sent everything to you. The only photographs I saw were First Street and under the trash truck. So, I... You're right. I take that back. You're right. Now, I do have, I have timed it, so... And prosecutor ordered to ask those? No, she wanted us to vote on that. I said I didn't. She hasn't seen them either. I apologize. And actually...
Is there any more discussion? Ready for roll call?
Sure.
Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yep.
Jeff?
No. First Street's not on the agenda. Where does that fall? Okay.
I have one question, kind of off topic, but I want to make sure I ask this. Has anybody seen the children, plain, slow children plane signs that we ordered? Jack, did you come across the children plane signs that we ordered?
Are those the ones I questioned when we were paying dues last month?
Yes. I just wanted to verify that nobody... But you did find the children.
Did you send the check?
I did, but I also emailed him and told him that we haven't received them. And he told me to verify, so I'm double checking.
I've never seen it. Isn't that, is that MMCO?
No.
This is a different company?
MMCO is, are advertising.
Oh, okay.
The advocate.
What's the name of the company?
Econo Signs.
How long ago did you inquire about?
A couple days ago.
Do you know what method they shifted with?
They actually sent me a verification that they were delivering. But it wasn't signed by anybody. I can't remember what, who the company was. But it wasn't signed by anybody, so I was very... I don't know why anybody would take signs, but I mean, if they just drop them off, anybody could have. But I don't know how this is going to happen. And that's always worked before. Okay, I'm done.
All right, and then building reserve sheet.
The two print copies out for everybody on the...
I, I just printed one copy.
And you only need one resolution, but on the rules themselves?
No, I just printed one. I thought everybody got an email except for Ben, or Dan. Did you get an email on that?
Those are both in the same email she attached.
Yeah, this, this is the resolution. And then that's the...
It looks to me like she reformatted the whole thing.
And it's six pages long.
Is it because, because the draft I have is front and back?
Right, and I, I honestly think it's way too long for what we're trying to do. I mean, I'm sure it has all the legal stuff it needs to have in it, but...
We need that. That's why, that's why we had to review it, but came back a lot longer than it was going in. Now, I noticed today I went on your website, Jenny, and you must have recently taken the current application offer there? Because there's not one there anymore. There used to be.
I have to check. I didn't think I took it off.
But once that is approved, can you get, get it put out there so people can download it and read it or print it? Does that have a message on it too, Ben, or just the resolution itself?
I didn't print the email itself. I just printed it.
Basically, she had, she said we were good to go legally though at tonight's meeting, right, with this resolution?
Yeah.
This is what they give everybody?
Yeah.
The whole thing?
It's longer, but I don't know that it really has any more, anything much different. Did you see anything different, Jenny? She did mention that it doesn't have the rate on it, but we already have a rate scheduled, so that wouldn't really matter. And if you aren't going to print those, it may be better not to have the actual rate on there because of the changes. You can still use the forms. That's pretty straightforward, isn't it, Dan? It is. There's one thing, it's kind of, I'm not real sure about, says... That the board hereby empowers the township to rent and have portions of the town hall complex not using township business and empowers any one trustee or the fiscal officer with the authority to render that agreement on behalf of the township. So, that'd be one of us, or generally have to, one of us in here has to make reservations, sign off on that. She, she cited an ORC. Is it in that, or is it in the letter? Is it in the resolution? That's probably why she put that in. Is there, I don't, I don't know of any past resolution that has ever delegated township authority to... Yeah, there it is. See a number there. What does that reference? Is that what it's about? It's further down. The board finds that it has the authority to rent out these premises pursuant to a higher vice bed. Yeah, that's, that's why she apparently added that. Since we appoint Tom Watkins to rent it out, I want to make sure that we're allowed to do that. Does that form have like the old one where the fiscal officer always signed off on it? Does it have a signature? Sorry, I don't remember. Okay, that's where the blank is for, she was questioning about how much it costs. Same with that.
I think it's just really long.
Is it at the end? Okay, applicant's initials on it, okay. Right there, it says township by, as long as the fiscal officer signs it. I don't think there'd be a problem. Or a trustee could do it. And you, are you still picking these up once a month, or how are you doing that?
Don's been dropping off.
So, it's more, more often than once a month?
No, just once a month.
Well, I moved to, does that resolution be read into the, to the record, or? What's it titled?
Town Hall Rental Resolution.
I moved to adopt the Town Hall Rental Resolution prepared by...
This is a resolution.
The county prosecutor.
Allowing the rental of the building, and that's for each person that rents. Is there a second to Jeff's motion?
Oh, sorry.
Any more discussion?
When that was last done, 2010 was the date that was at the top? Was that run by legal counsel at that point?
I don't know.
I wasn't on the board at that time.
I don't know. I know we did, I don't think we did a resolution like this. I know we did, I don't think we did a resolution like this.
Yeah, the one referenced in it, in that... Part Ben's reading hasn't been... Part of the record that I know of.
Are we ready to do a roll call on the motion? Dan? Ben? Jeff?
Yes.
Yes, so do you.
How soon can you get that put on the website? There's nothing there now. The Don's phone number's there, I think, is what you put there. But we do have to address, when you do that, when you put the rate schedule to, because it's not, it's not on there. Thanks.
Are we still going to use Don to do the rentals, do we need to change anything there? Will we allow them to point him to do it?
I'd say we allow them to point him to do it.
I'd say talk to Amy, get a legal answer. It shows right there, places for signatures.
I just don't want any cross-communication between anybody.
I recommend, you want a resolution, we asked Amy about that? Well, I'll go ahead and move that we, okay, legal counsel, how do you word it, Ben? Legal counsel regarding who can sign off on the rental application forms?
Is there a second?
No, I'll second it, because it didn't say that there, it stayed in there after the little box.
Yeah.
But it didn't say that we employ somebody.
Roll call, Dan?
Wait, man, you do sign on every one of them, don't you, Janet? You look at it, you sign it?
Sign the resolutions?
The rental agreements?
After, when I'm receiving the money, yes, I sign them.
So your signature's on every one of those documents?
Yes, but it's after somebody's already rented the building. She gets them at the end of the month, before the meeting.
Right. I just wanted to verify that the township official actually was signing the sheet.
I'm talking about signing off on it, has the authority to actually rent the building.
Well, that's where that's signed, I'm not talking about the resolution, I am talking about the rental agreement, it's each time. At some point, she's...
But it's all over and done with by the time I sign it, because all I'm signing, all I'm doing is signing that I received the money.
Well, I think it's a great idea to get clarification on that.
So we're going to roll call, Dan? Ben?
Yep.
Jeff?
Who's going to contact her? Want me to do it? You want to do it?
Go ahead.
Me?
Sure.
Now, well, I guess that automatically become that, there are running dates on that, but it'll be the resolution made tonight, so I guess it'll go into effect immediately.
Yes.
Aren't we on new business?
No, we're on new business now.
Oh, just now, okay.
Couple things I had, real quick.
Send her Ben's is on there, is that...
Yeah, one guy I spoke to, I talked to two people about giving us a price. One guy stated that he is going to move here in the next couple of months, so he kind of, I guess, retracted the option to give a surprise on it. He said he wasn't going to have time, so. And then the other guy called me to set an appointment, I haven't set an appointment for me yet, so. Keep that on the agenda, I'll see if I can get some prices on it. Along with the sender Ben's, I received a call today from the salt company, wanted to know when we want to take delivery of our lager salt. They probably want to get rid of it. I need to call somebody back and tell them we want to take delivery. We have room in there for a load, I just don't want to take it until we have to. See if I can set up something like a ball ton.
Yeah. See when we have to take it back.
Just kind of push it towards...
Towards the end.
I'll call back about that. One thing, I guess, maybe throughout the table was that, we had an incident up on First Street, I'm sure everybody here is aware of that.
Amy had, I had learned about it through Amy sending me a copy and also the...
Photos, yeah.
The sheriff report that you had done and the pictures.
Correct. There was an incident where a resident property owner was going to move out of a house trailer down First Street South, First Street South. And something was wrong with the house trailer, it drove under the road. It kind of tore the road up, you saw the pictures. I know I went out and looked at it, Dan received a call me when I looked at it. Kind of asked what our options were, what we should do, what we shouldn't do, she said we needed to discuss it at the meeting. I'd taken pictures the night that it happened. I'd also filed up a police report the next morning, so it would be documented if something did happen. Stay out patrol also came out, they did make a report. So, I mean, we need to kind of decide if we want to, Amy said, if we want to go after the... Person, of course, that was in, I guess, in charge of moving the house trailer. If we want them to pay for damages to the road. So, we kind of discussed it, I mean, I'm in favor of, I mean, they tore up the road, I think they should fix it. It's gouged out pretty bad in several places. Some of it has filled back in with gravel and whatnot, but that means it's permeable now. Water, ice, and everything else is going to get down in there, so it's just going to get more busted up. Since that, they had moved a modular up in there, and they've done some more damage for the residents. They sent me some pictures via text. That there was more damage done to the road, and right away where they had taken the truck, truck into the ditch, tore the ditch up. Grass on each side of the road could be people's yards, but it is.
Did somebody send you photos of that additional thing?
Yes, after the original incident.
On the south side?
South side, no, I'm sorry, on the north side.
Okay, that's what's from each...
Sorry, on the north side. So there was more damage after that. I kind of spoke with the woman, she was kind of just very, I guess, ruined with me. Didn't really want to talk about the incident, it was the night that it happened.
Were you there, did you see it?
I didn't see it happen.
So you don't know if it was her that actually physically did this?
Every neighbor that lived on that street was outside, yes.
She driving the truck that did it?
She wasn't, she, I, from what I've heard, is she owns the truck, she wasn't physically driving it, one of her workers, helpers, whatnot.
Because the report only had the one lady's name on it.
Right.
You're the only one that had any thing there. There was no interview of anyone but you.
The sheriff never came out that night, the staff patrol came out, but they didn't make a report. I mean, if anybody drives up forty, they can see a gouge from the church to the top of the hill, and stay around forty, so.
On Amy's email, she had mentioned about you getting with ODOT, you had done that?
I did, I was able to contact them on, actually yesterday, I tried Friday, couldn't get on anybody. Talked to them yesterday. The gentleman I spoke to said that he was aware of it, but he needed to follow up with his boss to see if they wanted to take any action on it. Left me my phone number, have somebody contact me, I said that was yesterday.
Didn't have a timeframe, how long it might take. Because her advice was to talk to, to get the FODA before you act. My impression was before we took action, find out where ODOT was going with their part of it.
I think she kind of recommended to see if there was, if it was going to go to a lawsuit or whatnot, or whatever, or to demand, you know, compensation for it, to do it as a lump sum with the state. I think that's kind of what she was pertaining to. I haven't received a call back, I don't know what their intentions are, I don't know, I can't speak for them, so.
Like I say, you threw me when you were saying...
It's the...
South side, because over the weekend I stopped up there.
Sure.
And with a couple of rains, your picture shows breaks and stuff, you can't see any of that white spray paint at all.
Sure.
You know, and...
And like I said, I know some of this...
You can definitely see something happening in forty, but up there...
It had it all the way up to where it turned into gravel, grass up there towards the gate.
I saw the pictures, but it looks a little different now.
Well, it does, and like I said, some of it filled with gravel.
Somebody physically went and did something?
No, probably from the rain, you know what it is.
Because my impression is just, there's a lot of rain that comes out that hill.
Sure.
My impression that was, the reason pictures were different was probably because of the rains.
The bad thing is now, it's permeable. This winter, water's going to get in it, get down in the road, it's going to freeze, it's just going to break up more.
How deep are they?
I didn't physically measure them, I mean, but it was down through the asphalt.
And you can tell the depth in forty, because it's good asphalt.
I mean, it literally, Dan, it literally took out chunks of blacktop that were, you know, three-ish, three-ish pieces.
Did they do fill that back in, or the rain fill that back in, or something?
Probably, yeah, some of the vermin stuff that washed down in there, so. Amy also asked that I get an estimate of what it would cost to fix it. I'd ask small brothers to give us an estimate on doing it, they had...
Did they come out? Did you just look at your pictures?
They were here when we opened the road bids, we asked them to go up there and look at it, they were here, go up and look at it, so they did.
So they have seen it?
Yes, emailed me an estimate, which is $4,500 to fix the road from forty to the top of the hill, where it turns to gravel grass.
From forty?
North to the top of the hill.
Forty to the top of the hill.
Just to where it turns...
Not to North Street, just up past the driveway there, just a little bit.
Before you get to the help's place, the passersby?
Pass it up.
That is past the pine tree?
Once you hit the pine trees.
Picture it showed the pine trees and it looked like some sod and stuff, which wasn't the road.
Right, right.
You're going all the way up to that point?
To resurface with the road. Yes, that was theirs.
In the eyes of that day, I heard you seen a stray from forty, brought up from First Street. She also reported to me, I've seen her, since where she is, she reported to me, I understand, maybe not. But I would just like to hear it from forty.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I think every resident that lives on First Street on that side was pretty upset. You know, of course, they drive on that road every day. They don't want it anymore. Tore up the road.
The court said it was parked, it was still parked here when the sheriff was here?
Yes, I believe it was.
On the corner lot there? Has it been removed from the township at this point, as far as we know?
As far as I know, it's not there, I don't know where she committed, but it's not there. So, I mean, I'd like to move forward on through the pictures, the estimate, you know, the police report. The first step Amy had advised is not to take a report, is to ask for the damages. Is to ask, ask to have the road.
Did she send digital correspondence, because I didn't see that?
It might have been the phone call, I talked to her, I'd have to...
I don't have a problem asking that. Because there's nothing on that report that, other than what you said.
Sure.
You know, so like, is even that, is that even the proper person that should be addressed? Is she the owner? This person's name on there is the one that owns the trailers?
She was the property owner that owns the trailers, yes. She was there, and the incident happened, yes.
So what, what motion do you exactly want to do here?
I'd like to make a motion that we turn it over to Amy and let her, you know, handle trying to, I guess, compensate the township for damages done to the road.
I guess I only have part of the information, if she spoke with the applicant, she emailed. Because I had the impression that she felt ODOT's stance on it was a pretty important part of it, but she can still bring that in, she had that information, so.
Throw a second to the motion?
Now, this is just for her to basically gather all the facts, correct?
And I'd like to see a letter sent to... I think she had said that demand, I can't, I can't remember exactly, it was, it's demand compensation for the road getting repaired.
The other part of that is whether or not that estimate is actually fair, you know? And it's only one bid.
I asked her us to do a model, she said we just need one.
That was Amy saying that? Because originally, I thought it said five thousand, and I had asked her, where is the property, is that when you got the point, you got the written estimate?
That's correct, I, when I spoke to her, she said, how much, and I said, it was verbal, approximately five thousand.
But it came in at forty-five hundred on the written estimate?
Some change, yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, second.
Other discussion, just to make this clear, this motion is just for Amy to... Basically, see how the best to pursue this from a legal standpoint. Is that the consensus?
I'd like for her to ask for compensation, I mean, I guess that's the first step, instead of just jumping on, taking somebody to court, you know, we can ask the township to be compensated.
Ask her to pursue the facts and send a letter to the, what's her name? So whatever needs to be...
The property owner? Are we ready for roll call?
I need the lady's name, what was it?
Yeah.
Lady's name was Terry Paxson.
Pax?
P-A-C-S-O-N, I believe.
Do a roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, that's all under none due business.
I have one, I think you have anything else?
New business? If it was covered, are there any other businesses?
Kind of want to see if maybe some people in the community want to do like, like a park cleanup day. I know some of the equipment needs power washed, the new playground set, it's kind of in the shaded areas, it's kind of getting maybe some mold growth and stuff like that on it. So we can definitely do power wash, the shelter house can use power wash. If we need to get maybe another dump truck loaded with mulch or something in there to fill in some of the low spots. I mean, it's up to you guys, if some people want to get together, I'm willing to kind of head up the project, but it's up to people, you know, here that want to do something. Either people in the rest, that aren't interested.
I know we can get at least six or eight, if you're here.
Yeah, we can get enough people.
I mean, I'd like to see us maybe set up a day and try, Saturday or Sunday or something like that. We won't know ahead of time, so if we need to get mulch, we can just run one of our trucks up to, haul in mulch, get a little bit of mulch. Wind's good for it. I know it's hard to commit a day.
Yeah, I'd say look out a couple, you know, several, few weeks. We have to get some of the group together, the friends of Bowling Green Township, I'm sure if you come up with half a dozen at least. In the next two to three weeks. Some of us will not be in town, I know there's some traveling going on, so it may be spotty, I don't know how soon we want to do it.
Whenever, it's just, it's something I think needs done.
It might, it might be better, easier to get more volunteers closer to August, but...
Sure, we can do it the end of July, if, you know, the last two Saturdays in July are the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth. It doesn't matter, maybe, it really doesn't?
I'd say yes, the twenty-sixth, but...
Well, let's put that, the date of the twenty-sixth, if something changes, getting...
July?
Yes.
What time?
Let's do it in the morning. I mean, I think...
Four AM or...
Yeah. Just comes if then you're in the four PM.
I think if we start at eight, eight-thirty, maybe we could be out here by lunchtime.
Oh, you stick around before you can have a pop off. Groundhog.
Is that a motion, Dan?
Yeah.
Is that, yes?
I'll point, July twenty-sixth, park cleanup day.
Call second motion.
Can I, can I ask if the friends of Bowling Green Township put that on their website?
Yeah, you have to be happy to.
Do a roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, I go to public comments. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to bring up the, an issue we discussed last month. As we know, Barbara Wiseman, previous president of Bowling Green Township Park Committee, who was arrested for multiple felony thefts and organizations right here in Brownsville, within Bowling Green Township. It was also in charge of the financial records of the Bowling Green Township Park Committee. The discussion and agreement was that we would have a special meeting. Matter of fact, Jeff Court painting requested a special meeting for this. We agreed on the sixteenth of June, I believe, at six PM. Jeff Court Penny offered to spearhead up that investigation. I'm wondering, Jeff, what was the result of that investigation? I think the township citizens, taxpayers, homeowners, voters should know what your, your findings were.
Were you here? Were you here for the meeting?
I was just wondering what your findings were.
I wasn't at the meeting, were you here?
So you, you said you would spearhead. So you would, you, I'm, I'm, I'm an individual citizen, I'm a citizen.
I'm trying to understand.
I'm not an elected official.
I understand that too.
Okay, what I asked you was, you are an elected official. You said you would spearhead up the investigation.
Those are your words, not mine.
I have it on tape, and I'd be happy to share that with you.
Okay, well.
You said you would spearhead it up multiple times.
No, you said that, those are your words.
You said you would do it. What were the findings? You said you weren't here.
Let me know when you're done, so I can speak.
Okay, so clearly you weren't here. I have a concern that an elected official, who knew of the situation, who agreed that it should be audited, agreed that these records should be, should be reviewed, wouldn't as much as show up or call to let anybody know who was here, that you would be showing up or not. Why didn't you show up to audit the records? Is what I'm asking you, when you said you would.
Are you done?
I asked you a question, Jeff.
Are you done?
I asked you a question, Jeff.
Please don't interrupt me. You've done it many times, please don't do it.
Don't, don't threat, are you threatening me? Should we call the police? Or are you threatening me?
You're interrupting me, sir, do you want an answer?
I asked you a question.
Oh, let's move on.
Please don't interrupt me.
I haven't interrupted you, you just asked a question. I've asked you multiple times.
How about some silence, so I can get.
He did, answer the question!
Why are you making noise?
Because I want to know the answer. Answer the question.
If you'd be quiet.
Answer the question.
Allow me to speak.
Silence, here you go.
Perfect. The meeting, you videotaped it, I believe, I don't know when you started your recording, I have it personally videotaped. On my tape, it's an hour, nine minutes, thirty seconds in. That meeting, clearly, by consensus at the board, was a tentative date, contingent upon Amy or legal counsel being there, okay? That's what I've got to say on the matter.
So for some reason you wanted legal counsel, that sounds very suspicious myself. And I think a lot of the elected officials, Jeff, would like to know, not elected officials, they probably know, but the elected officials, as well as the citizens of this township, would like to know why you refused to show up to audit the records of your very dear friend Barbara Wiseman, who's been convicted of multiple felony thefts. And we are, we are severely concerned that this woman had her fingers in the public fund, tax dollars. And I think you should be extremely concerned about that, at least enough to show up or call. Why didn't you do that?
I answered your question. I asked you why, were you here?
So you didn't have public cap, representation, or legal representation, is that what you're saying?
That's right, Amy did not come, it was contingent upon her being here.
No, it was not.
As it was discussed.
That's not correct.
It is.
It's not contingent upon her being here.
You said you would like her to be here.
Correct, you received an email.
One hour, nine minutes, thirty seconds, go back and watch it.
So this is pre-meditated, so you already have this in your mind, if you need to state this time on this film. It was not, it was not.
It's on the official audio right there too.
It was not contingent upon Amy being here. You received the email, just as I did.
We had a consensus at this board, your words, not mine.
Okay.
Go back and listen to it.
It was intended today.
So what were the results of this? That's what's more important.
You should know.
Jeff, you, you actually asked that it be a meeting, and you asked that it be advertised, you said.
No, sir, there was no discussion about advertising for that meeting, which is another point.
You're wrong.
The only motions that were made for meetings had to do with the morning, the other meeting that was for the road bids.
You're incorrect, completely incorrect.
So were there public meetings that advertised?
There were no, there was no motion made that I, to have this meeting, it was contingent upon legal counsel being there to assist us with this. And the consensus of the discussion was, was just that.
So you have a fear that we can't sit here like you do now, without legal counsel to review somebody who may have stolen?
That's your.
That's a question.
That's your confabulation.
Confabulation?
Yes, sir.
Confabulation, what I'm asking you is, you have a clear fear, a, a, a concern that you need to protect or hide something, is that what you're saying, to the, the taxpayers and the voters?
That's what you're inferring.
I'm asking you if that's the case.
No.
Then why didn't you show up?
I answered that question.
Because you didn't have legal representation here, I think it's a fallacy.
No, the board didn't have legal representation.
I don't think they needed.
For this exact reason, we have people like you, just going on and on, open-ended. And you are not an unbiased person, Mr. Friends of Bowling Green?
My name's Vermillion, Mike Vermillion.
It has nothing to do with Friends of Bowling Green.
Were you at the meeting or not? What did you find? That's what I want to know. Do Jenny, is the one that has had the fist, the financial documents on this the entire time?
No.
You had it to Jenny.
No, 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 no. Now, do the deposits match the rental forms?
I did not have the records the entire time.
Were you at the meeting?
Jeff Court Penny did.
Were you at the meeting?
Jeff Court Penny did.
I came.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
I'm in the traffic.
The chain of commit, the chain of possession went from Barbara Wiseman, the criminal felony theft individual, your close friend, to you. You admitted to taking them, and it was months before you submitted them here, and all of a sudden, all these records come up missing. Jeff Court Penny, we're asking, why didn't you show up to the meeting, and what happened to those records?
I answered the first question tonight, the other one, I clearly answered last month.
So you're refusing to answer this month?
It would be repetitive.
Are you refusing to answer?
You have selective hearing, sir.
So that means you won't answer.
Already answered it.
I'm perceiving that he's a thief, because Barbara is funny, and he's protected.
I don't agree with that, but I think that Jeff knows more than, he's sharing with us, and the fact that he held these records is very suspicious. And I think the Bowling Green Township residents have a right to know what's going on, and the fact that you didn't show up is very suspicious, no doubt.
To you?
To me, how many people in here? Everyone!
Anyway.
You're not everyone, you're allowed, you're allowed one.
Everyone, he didn't have a problem, that he didn't show it to the meeting? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. How's that, close enough?
This all being said, when he's done, I'd like to know, when, well, you did give me the tape, I see. So I can hear what, you know, did you bring all the records? Did you see any discrepancies?
Should have came to the meeting, I found out.
Mr. President, is it open forum? Are we gonna have some order?
It's probably got the.
Open, public comment.
Open forum, where we got jagged?
Jeff, you didn't show up, and you're trying to make excuses.
I'm waiting for you to answer it.
You're, you didn't show up, and you're trying to make excuses for not showing up. You're sounding like with a veiled garbage excuse of not having, do you have an attorney that you're representing you?
That's your pick.
Do you?
Don't need an attorney.
My, my. I think the trustee has a right to know what their elected officials are doing when, when they had possession of, of documents that very well may have shown criminal theft, and you held on to them, and then you refused to show up to review them.
You said that you were an, you said you were an auditor, or an accountant, whereas you said you were an accountant, and you volunteered your time, but yet you refused to answer whether you were even here, what did you find?
Wait, 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 you are paid to show up here, and you didn't as much as call. You didn't show up. Why didn't you show up? Voters don't care whether I showed up, Jeff.
Well, I don't care if you did, but I'd like to know.
I know you don't care. I know you don't.
Come to the meeting!
When I go, oh, I had an opportunity, I asked for these, I got them tonight, I'll have an opportunity, if you're not gonna help me, and tell me what, and Jenny's not gonna tell me whether there are discrepancies, I'll find out what happened.
Ignore it because she's your dear friend, Barb Wiseman, Jeff Court Penny are like this, and you know it, and the township trust, the, the other elected officials know it, the residents know it, and every voter will know it come to 2015.
That's your noise.
It's not my noise, and you do not insult me, I'm not insulting you, I'm asking you a question.
Well, I think you are insulting me, you're beyond insults, and I'll say as I please.
You, you don't insult me, Jeff.
It's your noise. It's your noise.
It's your voice!
You should have showed up, we elected you. Won't happen again.
I can answer one of those questions.
Got one on the team.
About, about some discrepancies that were there, and there's two major things.
So you're gonna give me some results of the meeting?
If you had showed up, you'd have known.
Okay, so you're either gonna play games, or you're gonna tell me what you found?
Play games with money?
I'm gonna tell you two things that were found, that are major discrepancy, okay?
What's that?
There's two years worth of calendars for the rental agreement that are not found. So they got lost in the mix, somewhere from there to you to here, okay? So that's two years of calendars.
Okay, well, they weren't in the box, and I had possession of it.
Every original, every original rental agreement that was given back to Barb Wiseman.
Apparently, what we learned last month, she still has those.
Okay, would I appear?
Why does she still have them?
Those need to be turned over to the board.
Well, okay, I move, I move the motion that we. That we send a letter to Barb Wiseman and request those documents that you said she still has. Simple as that. If she has them, get them.
Why didn't he just collect my work over there? I'm confused.
We discussed that one month too, and that's what we learned.
You're pretty hard to force on public records and public.
That's why I'm moving the motion.
Why wouldn't you ask her for those when all that stuff is given to you, and you got stamping papers about this hija? And don't you think it's lightbulb that went off and said, wow, this isn't everything, maybe I should ask for everything? Everything wasn't there.
He said he asked for it.
I got what Jenny got, same, same box, same stuff. I can't produce something I didn't get.
Well, there's two, you asked her first the discrepancies, there's two major.
Now Jenny, my question is, do the finances match the rental forms?
No.
They don't. Why not? Don't you check it every month? How would you?
I think it's pretty hard why not, Jeff.
It's been six months, Jenny, the only ones you've had on all since December, right? The money and the form she gave you.
You're trying to focus on me?
Right, there it is, you can't produce.
I asked you a question. She turns in the money, she turns in the form, do they match with your deposits? That's what I've got to ask you, do they match? I'm done, I'd like to hear the answer.
This is what the discrepancy, discrepancy is. There's dates on it, there's names on the calendars, that we don't have rental forms for. So did they rent that? And not, and she didn't turn in the rental form with the money? That's what the discrepancy is.
So the deposits do match the forms, is that correct?
What do you mean the deposits match?
You make the deposits, right?
When I have, yeah, the money that I received from her.
Right, does it match the paper she gave you?
How would I know?
Because the ones that she received, there were names on the calendar from 2013 for a specific date.
Okay.
That were a rental forms, I would say the same, yes.
And how would I know whether the person that rented the building got their deposit back? I don't know that.
We discussed that last month.
Why wasn't this discussed during the meeting? The special meeting?
What she handed in to you does equal your deposits, and what it said was paid for the rental itself, not the deposit.
Yes, but how do I know that person got their deposit back?
I'm not defending it anyway.
Yeah, you are.
I'm trying to get facts.
No, you're not, you showed up at sixteen.
You're talking, you're fighting with it.
You're trying to buy your own story.
You're trying to protect your best friend.
And what are you doing right now?
Not protecting you.
Requesting a death.
Can I ask you something?
Mr. President, I'm gonna ask at this point that you please call order of the meeting.
I'm gonna go break it.
Do you?
Go ahead.
It's your meeting, so you do what you wish.
You walk out here with nothing to take, why did you not bring them over and set them on tape? You put them in your car and left.
I sure did, and I'm not gonna leave anything down here that you, or anyone else with a key, can walk in here and do something with.
You know, we're still here!
Everybody was still here.
And you left.
Yes, you did.
That's right.
And it's on tape.
What?
It's all sitting here waiting on you to bring in papers over here, you got it in your car and left.
What date are you talking about?
After the meeting.
I'm talking about the meeting.
December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen.
There you go, right down.
I didn't get the, I didn't get that box until early January.
Yes, you did. We said you were watching.
Everybody was watching.
No, I didn't get any records until early January, so whatever you're talking about.
Oh, boy.
That's not what you said.
You have some questions to answer.
It is what I said.
You said you left here and went over and got them. Because you didn't want her to be responsible for something she no longer had any parts with.
I didn't walk over there on the thirty-first and get any records.
Sure.
And then he came over here and said that he gave the extra money from that auction to the church. Then we find out, they stole from the church! And there was no proof that he had that money to give, nothing.
I don't know what you're talking about there.
We know what we're talking about, he wrapped it in his pockets and driving off.
Now, Ben has indicated more than once now that there were people that came to you that said they gave you a, gave a deposit they didn't get back.
That's correct.
And our accountant volunteer said that he thought there might be ways that could be found in there, is it? I don't know how.
A rental form that circled, did you get your deposit back? Did you give your deposit back, yes or no? That, that means absolutely nothing. Just because somebody circles yes or no, means nothing, okay? They can circle yes, they gave it back, and then put it in their pocket.
Okay, well, if you have these people that claim this, you know, they need to come forward, how do we, how do we work with phantoms?
Is the board asking for, for people to come forward, is that what we're gonna ask for?
Who are they? Ben, you talked to them?
I don't know if they want their names put out there, but yes, I did.
I just don't know how you can pursue something with, you know, it's basically hearsay without.
Especially if you're a dear friend.
Wouldn't you, the question, wouldn't you just contact the people that are on the contracts and ask them to come in for verification, if, if they got their deposit back or not?
Here's a simple honest question, Jeff, it took you two months to, to, you took possession of the documents, and to you, two plus months of, to you gave them to Jenny, with the prosecutor advising you that you need to return those over, you didn't want to turn them over on your own free will.
No, that's not true.
You, I had asked you several times for them.
I never refused to get any documents.
The prosecutor advised.
And the problem line is, Jenny had all the, it was December thirty, we had two meetings that night, I believe, right? We had two meetings, we had the special meeting, and then we had the monthly meeting, because it was on the thirty-first, right, December, right? We had our special meeting, and Harold walked across the street, he handed me the stuff, I put it on the table, that was December.
It was November.
That's not true.
Yeah, it was.
We see it in two parts.
I'm talking about the December meeting, that's probably what she's talking about, when she's heard me say that I got the stuff from Harold. He handed me the December stuff, and it was the meeting that was met.
She watched it.
That's your role, that's my question, my question is.
The relevance to your question is the fact that the financial documents Jenny has always had. The last she got them is what I just referenced, December thirty-first.
Have you, have you always had copies of the calendars?
No.
Have you always had possession of the originals?
No.
No.
I'm talking about that.
That's not, it disappeared from there to you to have gone to Jenny, it's disappeared in, in there somewhere, and I don't know why.
If it exists, it didn't disappear when I had my possession, because I didn't, like I already stated, I didn't have any financials. The only calendar I saw on there was two thousand and thirteen.
And, and I'll say disappeared was the first one. I just wonder why it took you two plus months to turn those, that box of documents, which was about this big, over to the township?
I already told you last month, and prior times, and Amy can confirm this as well, that my concern was the meeting minutes, and I still don't have, since we're talking about that, Jenny.
No.
I would, I do want a copy of the meeting minutes.
Oh, I would love a copy.
That's fine, but I do want a copy of the meeting minutes. That was my concern, I wanted to get copies for myself.
You're not concerned about the money, you're concerned about.
Good, good question.
There was no money in there, there was no council checks in there.
It insinuated that there was money in that box.
He didn't touch them, correct? He said he did not touch those records that were in that box. He said he did not touch those records that were in that box. Now now he's saying that he couldn't find records that he's looking for.
I just don't understand why it took two plus months to get those.
There's a lot of noise in here, it's not even relevant.
I can hear you. So if I can hear you.
I can't. I got all this noise back there.
You can hear me if I can hear you. Why did it take two plus months to get those documents to the township?
I just told you. I wanted to get copies of the meeting minutes. I didn't get that opportunity to do it. That's it.
So you did go through the box?
You will do it. Yes, you did.
There's no relevance.
Yes, did you, did you go through the box?
I already told you I looked through the box. I didn't get a chance to take it and copy the part I wanted, which was the meeting minutes.
So you have two plus months because you wanted it?
Early January until the time that I personally met with Jenny. I'm not leaving the box down here, okay? I personally met with Jenny, and as I was driving out, you pulled in and you were looking in that box too. You knew that they were, that they were here.
I, I saw one.
And any financial stuff.
A cardboard box about this? That, that's overexaggerating, huh? For.
That box was bigger than that, stuff like this.
No. That's not the documents that were there. And half of it was.
Primarily, it was meeting minutes. There's a binder, a blue binder in there. It's about that thick. And it's all the meeting minutes from the start.
So for that two plus months.
I saw the 2013 calendar. There was some other stuff in there related to, you know, catalogs and stuff like that.
So that two plus months you tapped it because you wanted to make copies of the meeting minutes?
That's right.
Did you go through the box and make copies of the meeting minutes?
I already told you I didn't. I just requested to get a copy of it.
So you don't get any copies out, you don't put anything out of the box?
But you looked at the minute, the meeting minutes.
I looked through the box. I didn't sit and read all the meeting minutes and start to finish. That's why I want a copy of it.
I just asked you a simple question.
What's the question, Danny?
Did you look at the minute, minutes, the main?
Yeah, I looked at them.
Okay, now, all right, you looked at them.
So you went through the box of the documents, whatever.
Yeah, I looked at the meeting minutes, sure.
Yeah, so you took the.
But I didn't get to, I wanted a copy and then I could look at it in my ledger. I, I don't want that history changed, and I don't want it locked. And the meeting minutes have all that documented pretty well.
Maybe I'll tell them about a couple of the crap.
So he had time to change everything that he wanted.
I, I'm not gonna say.
I suggest that we move on.
I took two plus months to take possession of those documents. You looked through it, and then the prosecutor advised you that you needed to, you had to turn those over.
Now, that, that's based on part of the information. And I'm sure that she could confirm that to you.
Based on part of it?
There was never any refusal to turn anything over. There was never a demand to turn anything over. That's all there is to it.
This board, myself, asked for those for two months, and they never came to the table.
I told you, I'm not gonna leave them down here.
I don't mind.
I had. I don't know if you beat the dead horse about as much as I did.
I know that's going to happen.
You're not gonna get any worse.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Jenny, if you didn't bring in papers over there and I even got them, because someone could steal the stuff. And he didn't want that to happen. But two, two months later, he turned it over to Jenny. So why couldn't he turn it over to Jenny then? Why did he have to wait up to, you know, too much? Why didn't he turn it to you over there and then by the way?
This, this board wasn't privy to those documents. And we asked for them several times. We had to take it to the prosecutor's office. They ended up advising Mr. Corpini that he had to turn it over to the fiscal officer.
Well, he did.
So she could have judgmental preference.
Locking that?
I think it's important.
All right. There you have it.
You know, it's really strange. You know that we got somebody, you know, across the street that took them over there. Took them to church, took them to where it belonged. Now we got trust me, Jenny, tell us the truth. I mean, you can't get in a lot of nights. I'm that corporate with this guy a year ago. It's not still, I would want to fight dinner. Now, man, so far, just a half hour, forty minutes. I bet you he expressed it in his story some damn much. He kind of liked it, you know? It's disgusting. That's what I see out of him. He's a poor, poor man. You don't have to, you don't have to prove, you don't have nothing. And he don't have nothing.
Hold it. I have one question, I have a question. How are we going to try to pay those records that are not there?
Well, I already tried to move a motion. If you feel that she has calendars, for whatever reason, if you want to get what should have been copies of rental forms, in my opinion, you should always have the originals.
They weren't copies, they were the originals.
I, I, that was.
That's old documentation.
Okay, fine. But either way, if, if, if the board didn't have information they feel exists that she has, then we should.
You should have two boards, like it.
Yeah, no, nobody's contacted her and asked her. I haven't. Have you?
Could you do that for us?
I suggest the board, if you, if you feel that she has two cal, two calendars? And originals that Jenny gave her back, right? Right?
They got lost in the line from there to here. And then one pit stopped in the middle. So they got lost somewhere.
Okay. Two calendars. And I assume that you have, have you been giving her the originals back from the beginning? So she has, so, okay, from whatever time period that was until December 31st, 2013. So the verbiage of the letter would be, the township is requesting that you turn over the original copies that you had given her?
Shouldn't the box be the original letter?
Yes, probably. Make it easy, I move that the, similar to the letter to the lady on First Street. I move that the board asks Amy to help us draft a legal letter. Definitely. So if you want to work the resolution, go ahead. Whatever you want to do.
I didn't word it, but I, I want to make sure the verbiage in there doesn't state just those two things. I want it open-ended to anything, anything that you have, any, that, that she has.
Well, I'm sure Amy can advise us on that too, so I don't think.
Was that?
Amy can advise us on that. That's part of the motion, to get Amy to provide legal counsel of what we're trying to determine whether it exists. For what?
They do what happened.
That's another thing too. On our records and retention schedule, I had just gotten a copy of that because I'd asked for a copy of Gary's stuff. What does it say about calendars on the records and retention schedule? Do you have, do you have records from this year? Do you have records from prior to Barb Wiseman? What do you have with tal, with calendars?
Listen, I was asking, what's the timeframe? Is there five years, ten years, forever?
There isn't one if it's, if you're trying to.
It is on there.
Is that there's probably a.
Those original forms are a hundred percent should be there.
Yeah.
Well, those should, I would hope that the retention schedule has rental contracts as permanent. Or, or is that something, is that not permanent?
I'm not sure that's on there either.
Okay, well, it needs to be on there. I, I feel that both of them should be permanent.
Wouldn't that have been a document, even the calendars, that would have been produced and maintained by the township? She was an extension of the township, so that was produced and maintained by the township.
That was in 2007, the Jenny, you and Ben put that in place. And I don't know that you ever updated it. The date on that was 2007, right? Where you created that?
Is there a second to the question?
Dan, may I?
Okay. How are you, how are you gonna, just to clarify? What, what is the motion, how's it gonna read when you?
I'm going to request Amy draw the letter requesting from Barb any documents pertaining to township records.
Okay.
Maybe I'll send one to Jeff too.
Where are we? First and second?
Yeah, we're on roll call.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ben.
Did you put that, second letter, send it together?
Do you want me to?
Are you, wait a minute.
She was in the chamber.
I'm gonna ask for you to use proper parliamentary procedure. That would be, that would be amending a motion. And there's a process, Dan should know how to do that.
Amended motion that we send the, send the same letter to Jeff to the press.
To amend the motion, you use second on the amendment. Okay, I'm gonna ask the fiscal officer, please read the amended motion.
Dan made a motion to amend the original motion to also include sending Jeff Corpini a letter about receiving, requesting any documents that he may have.
Okay, I'd like to hear the whole motion read as it, as it's amended.
I read you the amendment.
I want the motion including the amendment read.
You made the motion. You don't know what it was?
You wrote it down, please read it.
Jeff made a motion to request any original documents from Barb by letter from Amy. Any originals that belong to the township.
And the amendment.
And it was amended to also send Jeff a letter stating the same. I'm doing roll call. Dan.
Yeah.
Ben.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Question, Danny.
Why are these documents, I mean, the records, then missing places? What, what, you guys even have a thousand page, I mean, why?
We was.
There's a procedure that we have to do, sir. To, if there's any records that weren't given to us that we need to follow to ask for anything else that might be out there. If it's, if it's not there, and it's supposed to be, there's consequences. If it's not there, and it didn't matter, then there's no consequences.
Well, you know, there wasn't a collection, but the people who aren't there are saying no.
Anything else?
Yes. I've lived here almost twenty-five years in the city. I've come down to these meetings, it lasted fifteen minutes, a half hour. Nobody ever had a trouble, no money missing, new equipment, everything. Jeff can sit in here, he screws this place up so damn bad. We ain't got no money. Stole the money. Everything. What is wrong with the people both?
Mr. Hedges, he stated he was stolen money, you know? That's a statement, but I haven't seen any.
Because Jeff's.
That's the first thing, that's the first thing I wanted to find out. What, what did you learn at that meeting? Anything?
You have the audio.
I'll define, okay. I guess if you're not gonna be professional enough to share that with me, I'll just have to.
You should have been here, you have to know the reason.
There was a reason. I already told.
Because Amy didn't show up. Do you know why Amy did not come?
It was contingent.
You received an email just as I did.
It was contingent upon her being here, and that's very, that was very clear. Now, how you write them in the meeting minutes, that's your business. But on the audio that you're requesting, you say you're gonna save for a year. At least for a year, that, that works to be there.
Yeah, did you know that she wasn't gonna show up?
Her email stated that she was unable to make it at that, at that meeting.
So you knew she wasn't.
She also went on to state that she felt that it was important as a record request to let people look at the records, which is fine. The fact of the matter is though, anybody that wants a record request to review the records, if it's not just a copy of something, they can do that at any time. We don't have to have a special meeting to do that. You can get with the fiscal officer and make those arrangements.
Thanks for your education.
Sit down and talk with her, and, you know, you gotta work through her schedule too, if it's really a lot of stuff.
It's a fact that she's not been around here.
No, it's just a fact.
So you knew that she wasn't gonna show up.
We didn't have to hold a meeting for, for a resident to look at the records.
You wanted to have a meeting.
Yeah.
I, I have nothing more to say on it, Dan. If you don't understand what I've said, you know.
Well, I understand that you requested us to have a meeting for that.
If you knew she wasn't gonna show up, and it was contingent on her being here, did I receive an email? Did you receive an email? Did you receive a phone call? Did you receive any kind of correspondence from you saying, hey, are we still gonna have this meeting? Amy advised that she's not gonna be able to make it? Are we still having it? Are we not having it? No. Nothing.
Apparently you still had it.
And apparently you weren't there.
I was not apparently about that.
Yeah, you weren't there.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah.
Listen, I'm making motion to pay bills.
You got some money back there.
I'll second your motion.
I got a question. Okay. The Steen County Building.
Okay, I move to, uh.
I have a couple of questions.
Hang on. I move that we not, I seconded the motion already. Right? I move that we go ahead and let public comment continue. As we are.
Okay, go ahead. The Steen County Building, $2.8 million salt bar. It's up 160 north of Zingusville. You guys know about it? Somebody was saying that it's for Knox County, Lickie, and the Steen County. I was wondering if you guys would come and get it sometime to, so everybody can have more salt. And I was wondering if you guys wanna go up there and get salt, or is that too far away?
Like to purchase it? Is that what you're asking?
Is that an ODOT facility, or is that an ODOT owned?
Yeah, I think.
So like, like to purchase it or the, like store salt there?
Well, I guess, I guess purchase it. If they, if they're gonna make it available, it should be cheaper if they got, you know?
Right.
I don't know.
There will be boxes of salt. Correct me if I'm wrong. It's by the state that runs. Says by what the state's gonna pay for. You know, Cinderella's back here, they have a kind of split. I thought it was, we house the rooms all back here. So I don't know that answer.
But I was just, I was just thinking, maybe that'd be another place that you could go.
Right, definitely, if we need to.
It's for, it's for three counties.
Right, we have a truck here. We don't go get it. We actually have it brought here.
Well, everybody's run low last year, so they just, they built some more. I don't know if we build more around the state or what.
But I mean, it's definitely something good to know in future, you know, that, that we might be able to.
I didn't know if you guys knew about it.
I appreciate it. Excellent. I think there was one other.
Yeah, I just kinda had an observation, I guess, but I remember Jeff's first term, I said, that's who was policing him. Because he seems to only care if the police, oops, that's on the other side of the table away from him. And, you know, so through both of these terms, all he's got is reservations, he brings the table, hundred grand, space, add it up. And make sure that he gets his friend appointed with nobody, nothing he has ever seen, or anything by him. Because there's anybody sitting around him, but there's somebody across the street. It seems obvious to me that you spent all that time making sure that everybody else that sits around you is doing their job. Maybe do a little more.
I just have a request to make sure that these people making public comment, that you get their names in, in the record.
William Shannon of all, S U V A L.
A lot of times we have people, it's really going off in here, and I don't know what's part of the record, who has the floor or anything, so if you could clarify that when you put it in the minutes, it'd be great.
I would suggest, you also indicate that an elected official called, um, private citizens' names while they were here, as opposed to directing, directing them or speaking to them as sir, or mister, or Mike, he knows me, I suggest to say that.
You're the same gentleman, that years ago you came in here, I called you sir, you said, you know my name, don't call me sir.
That's right.
So when you start your public comment, if you don't mind, in the future, please reference how you'd like to address that evening.
I would like you to call me sir, not Mr. Friends Bowling Green Township, like you did today.
Wait, call.
You did that as an insult.
Bowling Green Township, Paul Teers, that's there.
I move that we pay bills.
He's unbiased.
Yeah. Here's the first check, we have a note, check number 4446. It's made out to Pleasant Valley Limestone, $266.55. Did you bring time sheets and invoices tonight? This one's Pleasant Valley Limestone. 4443, $260.40, this is the Ohio Public End of Consortium for Dental, Life, and OPEC Funding.
How's it going?
Fiscal officer showing an invoice for check number six, $266.55. Again, Pleasant Valley Limestone. Is this the last one?
Give me my glasses. How you doing there?
Pretty good.
No, what gacks I have.
What's he might be?
I'll have the loyalty.
Check for Southern.
We are happy.
4440, Barbsa League, $79.12. Is this the time sheet? 4441, $38.61, NAPA Auto Parts. As I said, what it's for. 4442, back to that one. NAPA Auto Parts check, NAPA Gold Pool fill bill, $69.80. It's like they gave us in that piss, $39.60. And that's 4441, $38.61. Now, the recite, company, $127.50, 10 by 20 double wall. We have the receipt. 4445, 64, $64.00. Simply the whole advertising business, you know. Have you been involved with two special events? 4447, $64.00, Conciel, and that was the one that was. Simply the whole advertising business, you know. Have you been involved with two special events? 4441, $38.61, NAPA Auto Parts. As I said, what it's for. 4442, back to that one. NAPA Auto Parts check, NAPA Gold Pool fill bill, $69.80. It's like they gave us in that piss, $39.60. And that's 4441, $38.61. Now, the recite, company, $127.50, 10 by 20 double wall. We have the receipt. 4445, $64.00, Conciel, and that was the one that was. Simply the whole advertising business, you know. Have you been involved with two special events? 4447, $64.00, Conciel, and that was the one that was. Okay, that's for the, uh, helm recite. Helm's voice, number eight, 451, says it's a 10 foot by 20 foot double wall pipe. 30, yeah. And then you're talking about this expenditure. Okay, try to keep going. Now, Eastern Equipment Company, $163.23. And what it does, it's for freight boats, and RVs. Yeah, it's 4447, $163.23. Next check is 4448, Eagle Ford Company, it's a 200% 728.
That is the meaning of being hot, is I know I look like, I don't know what I look like. Sounds like the.
Did you have a role in Eagle Field?
I get subconscious. We're all playing. Don't get that deep in it.
Did you hear me, gentlemen?
I heard you.
Thank you. 4449, Jeff Corpenning, 62321. Is this your signature here, Dan? This, uh, final place is that your legal signature?
Last, last month, I hope it is on the record, I asked Dan to refer, trust that he read the ORC about trustee compensation. I guess Dan's left a meeting exception.
4451, Jack Richard Pedersen. I'd like copies of these, these are originals, right? I'd like copies of them. The check 4451 matches the time sheet signed off by, I guess that's Dan Van Buren, I don't know, it looks different than on my check where it's a face.
You can check my goddamn time anytime you want to, so.
Excuse me?
I don't cheat it.
What?
I don't cheat on my time. Don't you ever accuse me of that, Jeffrey.
Okay, Mr. Pedersen, here's your check and here's the time sheet, I want copies of it.
Please, Jeffrey, second there.
If you don't mind, stop interrupting me with your, whatever it is. 4454, Don Watkins, $141.64. But that's okay, this must be Watkins' name. Signed by Dan Van Buren, 14 hours. What's that?
It's Eagle Field Boy.
4454, $141.64, it's, uh, Don Watkins. Okay, and then we have Barbsa League, you have this time sheets?
It's there in the pile.
This one?
Yeah, during the so, and this township definitely.
Can you, just like the others, I want a copy of the zoning report, Jenny?
The zoning report?
Time sheet. If you want to use the report, it has what you did, time sheet.
It's time sheet. You got the report early.
4455. The amount is $153.94. She doesn't have it totaled down or anything, that's for.
I think it's right there.
17.5 hours, signed by Dan Van Buren. Okay, then it's $153.94. Now, Jenny, we're not, we're not meeting before I have a copy. Would I ask for a copy? What's a reasonable amount?
Finish to discuss copies after meeting.
Well, I'd like to know just in general terms, because I'm gonna be asking every month for things, and it'd be easier, and I, it may be it's more convenient if you make them in advance.
I'm looking at buying a copy of the sheet, so just finish what you're doing.
We don't have one anymore?
It doesn't, no, I mean for down here, because the one that was provided to us is not working.
Okay. Still on this one, right? And, uh, I guess, was there a question on this one, or what? Okay. Signed by Dan Van Buren, total number of hours is 17.
I know.
4451, and it's Jack Richard Pedersen, I mean. Is there a reason we're holding that one?
I wouldn't hold nothing.
Gardner Insurance, 4456. What do we still have here, Dan? Okay, there it is. Gardner Insurance, 4456, it's $3,977, probably insurance premium. Matches invoice for $3,977. Jay, I'd like to, this particular invoice, I'd like to be able to look the details, so I want copies of it for Gardner.
Eagle office, just go off to the next one.
Yep. What's this, Jenny?
It's Don's, we've already signed it.
Okay, all the checks are, all of this to here. What we got left here? Helm's recite. Can you tell me what these, this quantity of 30 double wall pipes are?
I don't think it's 30 double wall pipes, I think it's 30 feet.
Okay, well, that makes a little more sense. That's what it says on here, it says quantity 30, it doesn't say 30 feet.
Oh, no, this is, this is Jeff's debt.
That one's signed, is it? We'll play oil, what I have on here?
That's the one that's in your account.
This one, is that? This again, it's 4448, we have an invoice here for 27728, Eagle Field Oil Company.
That's part of the.
We're down to, um, this is just MNC, uh, you know.
What's the other one?
Barbsa League. We already did her, didn't we?
That was the real family, her mileage, that's on the track, she knows.
Oh, those, okay. Can you see it again? I'm still on one copy, I want to see how many miles it's actually coming up. Uh, the one for MNCO on the advertising, uh, the dates are here, 5, what were the dates of the meeting? Jenny? They're both in June. So this is another one. 4445, $63 for MNCO, and it's paid advertising for May 30th through May 30th. Okay, now this is the second check for Barbsa League, 4440, $79.12, mileage reimbursement, 52 cents. Is that, is that, the balance rate, is it set? Yeah, that is signed off by Dan Van Buren, 8 miles, and the sub month says 25 hours per month. Are you getting a 3 month, 3 months worth here, so thank you. Cause on here it says 25 dollars, on here it says home revenue 75.
Yeah, I think I'm a 75.
4 months.
Yeah, I think.
So this, this is $50 higher than usual. Okay, what do you want to do about that? Somebody's signing that.
Go back to me.
You want to delay it, or what?
Just a pair of days.
Well, if you're gonna do that, maybe you should write on this time sheet or something.
Go ahead, you can put it on there.
Okay.
I'll take here.
Now, wait a second. I know the problem doing that, I just have to, because recently you said that you had a bigger, certain.
We got a better monthly, instead of 25.
That's what you did, you paid for it.
Just for the phone, because I didn't change it to 25, because of the way that you're charged in there, so I was paying quarterly, and so that would have been a proper quarterly amount.
So these new rules, I thought, new rules are strictly for payroll, and it wouldn't be for any other reimbursement.
And it's only because OPRC requires a report monthly, it doesn't.
OPRC doesn't get a, a report of this check.
Yeah, it's payroll.
So that's Don's check, assigned us a 20, and then.
Truck Don said, he called to see me, he says, uh, your senior just recovered before he hit my, missed my truck, and slid out and weeded her. By the time I got pulled over, that was way back. I would have got my son.
What does it say? Jenny's made a note here on this time sheet, where she overpaid for phone by two months, will not be paid for phone for July, and all this, signed by the fiscal officer.
I'll sign it.
But you can assure us this is fine, because this is not for payroll. Well, let's do it by a motion. I move that we, that the check, if they're overpaying Barb Wiseman, I'm sorry, Barbsa League, wrong, wrong person. Uh, the $50 overpayment, applied for in July and August reimbursement. $25 cell phone reimbursement. We always use a roll call cell, pressure, kind of vice president, yeah. Move the call sets of presence, uh, absent. I didn't do the math on the mileage, but I'm assuming you did that, you did that right, because you used the eight miles. And we still, and we still have on the books, we still have on the books a little motion for the cell phone reimbursement. Did you do that, the organization?
It has a change.
Did you do it for the organization, I mean, just, just what, just the question?
Yeah, I don't think we did.
I should know. I think that's it, I move, try again to. What's that, that's a correspondence, or what is that? Is that not something that's in a report?
This is old stuff that I need to get for.
I'm into it, Jeffrey.